Good evening. City Council is now in session. Please stand for the invocation by Councilmember Butler Barlow, which will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
Thank you. Please pray with me. This is a New Year's prayer from Reverend Marcy Sherametta. As the dawn breaks on a new year, let us give thanks for all we hold dear, our health, our family, and our friends. Let us release our grudges, our anger, and our pains, for these are nothing but binding chains. Let us live each day in the most loving ways. Let us serve all who are in need, regardless of race, color, or creed. Let us lead the world from darkness to light, from falsehood to truth, and from wrong to right. Let us remember that we are all one, embracing all, discriminating against none. May our year be filled with peace, prosperity, and love. May blessings shower upon all of us and bring us a bright, healthy, and peaceful new year. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Freedom of Information Act certification is required at this time. Madam Clerk, please present the resolution for consideration.
A resolution certifying the closed meeting of January 3, 2024 pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-37. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Suffolk hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of Virginia law, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the City Council of the City of Suffolk in the closed meeting.
Counsel motion being ordered. Councilman Fawcett.
Move to approve, Mayor.
Motion for approval. Councilman Fawcett. Councilman Williams.
Second.
Second from Councilman Williams. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
The next item is approval of the minutes from the October 4, 2023 work session and regular meeting. A motion would be in order. Councilman Williams.
Move to approve.
Motion for approval. Councilman Williams. Councilman Johnson.
Second.
Second from Councilman Johnson. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We have no special presentations this evening. At this time, we will consider the removal of items from the consent agenda and adoption of the entire agenda as presented. Removal of any item from the consent agenda would only be necessary if any member of City Council wished to vote on specific items separately and a motion would be required. A motion would be in order at this time. Councilman Fawcett.
Move to approve.
Got a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett. Councilman Williams.
Second.
Second from Councilman Williams. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers at this time?
We have no non-agenda, excuse me, no agenda speakers at this time.
Would you please present the items for consideration?
Consent agenda item number seven, a resolution confirming the appointment of Stephanie J. Pugh as Deputy City Attorney. Consent agenda item number eight, an ordinance to accept and appropriate funds from Sentera Cares for the Department of Parks and Recreation Lake Mead Park Improvement Project. Consent agenda item number nine, an ordinance adopting the Hampton Roads Computer-Aided Dispatch Inoperability Project Memorandum of Understanding.
Mr. Manager, please provide an overview of the items.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, in regards to item seven, City Council by ordinance number 070076, establish the office of the Deputy City Attorney. Within that ordinance, it requires City Council's confirmation of the city attorney's appointments to that position. Tonight's resolution confirms the city attorney's appointment of Stephanie J. Pugh as Deputy City Attorney. Regards to number eight, the city has received funding in an amount of $50,000 from Sentera Cares for the Department of Parks and Recreation Kid Zone Playground Initiative to replace the aging playground equipment at the Lake Mead Park. Adoption of this ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of capital projects fund budget by $50,000. There is no local match. In regards to item nine, during your work session today, the fire chief briefed you on the Hampton Roads Computer-Aided Dispatch Interoperability Project. The ordinance under item nine authorizes the city to participate in the program and for the city manager to execute memorandum of understanding with the other participating communities.
Counselor, if there are no questions about the items, a motion would be in order to approve the consent agenda as presented. Councilman Williams.
Move to approve the agenda as written.
Motion for approval. Councilman Williams. Councilman Johnson.
Second.
Second from Councilman Johnson. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Do we have no public hearings this evening? We also have no ordinances to consider. We do have a resolution recognizing 2024 as the city of Suffolk's 50th Golden Anniversary. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, at this time, Deputy City Manager Kevin Hughes will provide the overview.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. At the last meeting, we shared with you some exciting things that we plan into 2024, making recognition of the 50 years of the consolidation of Suffolk and Nansman County. And so before you, as a resolution for your consideration, obviously, the City of Suffolk as we know it has a very rich history, as well as Nansman County. Nansman County dating back to 1637 when it was Upper Norfolk County, and then the City of Suffolk dating back to 1742. And so there's a lot of rich, very interesting history that we have in what we call home. We get to celebrate this piece of it where we consolidated the two communities. And so look forward to celebrating this with yourselves and the rest of the community throughout 2024. Thank you.
A resolution has been presented for council's consideration. What is your pleasure? Councilman Fawcett.
Move to approve, Mayor.
Got a motion for approval. Councilman Fawcett. Vice Mayor Ward.
Second.
Second from Vice Mayor Ward. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We do have a staff report this evening to speak to the Chukatack Library Initiative. Mr. Manager, please present an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, at this time, I'm going to request Director of Libraries Clint Rudy to come forward, who will provide the staff report.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, Mr. Manager. Thank you for this opportunity to share about an exciting and innovative solution to expand access to the Chukatack Library. So we have three physical locations in the City of Suffolk for libraries. We have our Morgan Memorial Library, which is downtown, our Nurse Suffolk Library, which is in the northeast part of the city, and then our Chukatack Library, which is in our northwest part of our city. A little background about the Chukatack Library. In 1923, the Junto Women's Club came up with the idea for the creation of a library in Chukatack. In 1983, a board member of the Morgan Memorial Library asked for a library station to be placed in Chukatack. And then the Saunders family donated a space inside their building, actually in a cloakroom. And then it moved into the current building, which was the former Chukatack High School Lunchroom Building. And the library moved in that building in 1989. So since I arrived in 2013, we've tried to really increase the usage and services at the Chukatack Library to make them comparable with our other two locations. And a few of the initiatives that we did, we standardized hours. In 2014, we did what we called the Chukatack Library Lift. So the landlord installed new carpeting, we painted the interior, we replaced the lighting, and upgraded the HVAC systems. We also replaced shelving and furniture, and then we were able to do that by purchasing items that the Chesapeake Public Library had purchased from closed borders bookstores. We reorganized the space and created a meeting room in the back that accommodates up to 10 people. And then we added artwork from the Chukatack Historical Society with reproductions. We also were able to, by generous donation from the friends at the Chukatack Library, get a new lighted customizable exterior sign, which is on the, at the street now. And then during the pandemic, we got funds from the OBSC Healthcare Foundation to install external lockers, which allow 24/7 no-contact access to materials. So when we were considering our next steps for Chukatack, especially post-pandemic, we really tried to think of three points. How do we provide impactful library services to the community? How do we build on the successes of previous efforts that we've done? And then also, how do we use technology in the best way possible to reduce the ongoing personnel costs? And so the solution that I'm excited to present today is something called Open Plus Access. And this solution is from a company called Biblioteca, and that company we currently work with, which provides our RFID, radio frequency identification technology that we use to check out our items and inventory them now. And this would provide authorized access to the building based on community need. It would integrate with our existing library and city systems. Security would be provided with our existing camera system inside and outside the building. We already have received approval from the city Human Resources Risk Management Department and support from Information Technology Department, and the landlord is also supportive. And in the bottom right, you can see the keypad that would be outside the door that would allow access with your library card and your PIN. So the next steps for this initiative would be to use existing $20,000 from the library's 2324 IT budget that's already allocated. Library staff will work with risk management, the police department, and IT to develop those policies, guidelines, and best practices for implementing this system. And then we will coordinate with the vendor in purchasing to purchase and install and then market to the community. So again, thank you for this opportunity to present this exciting initiative and for your support.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rudy. Counsel, any questions or comments? Councilmember Butler Barlow.
You knew I'd have something to say. Clint, thank you so much for the presentation. I was lucky enough to get a preview of this a few weeks ago. And the little Chukatack Library is near and dear to my heart, and of course, it's right in the middle of my borough. But so for those of you that don't use the Chukatack Library, currently, it's staffed from 8:00 to 8:00 on Mondays only. And that's better than closed entirely, which we were during the pandemic, except for the 24/7, you know, locker access. But it's been a big change, and it used to be a really active hub in the community. So I am very excited at the possibility that we begin to provide expanded services to the community, and I'm looking forward to, I know that there's going to be a PR effort to make people understand and to let people know that this is available. But I, again, it's been for, I didn't realize that it'd only been since '89. I thought it had been longer in that building. But it's been a really great, I guess for some people, that's a long time ago. Sorry. But it's been a great resource for our little village and for the surrounding communities. And I just appreciate the fact that you're not giving up and that we're going to make this back into a more well-used place. So I just want to say thanks, and I'm excited about it.
Councilman Fawcett.
If you would, the system you're putting in is going to give them, eventually give them some kind of an access way to go in. So I guess they'll use a PIN and whatever their identity is that went in there, so you'll know who's banned?
Yes.
How many people is that going to allow to go in at that facility at any one given time?
We can configure it by the hours and by the number of people that we're going, this is really an experiment for us, so we're going to start small. So the idea is, right now, you can go online and reserve our meeting spaces at any location, and you can do that online, and then staff have to approve your request. And then that's how we're going to use that same process to, you have to reserve the time at the building. So you'd have to say, go online and reserve, or contact us to say you're going to use it at a specific time, and then we will give you the code that you would then enter when you scan your library card.
So they'll be able to use it like Tuesday through Saturday, Sunday?
Correct.
Any other day other than, as Shelley talked about, about them being staff on Mondays?
Correct.
So that's pretty cool. That's a, that's a good thing for them, because not having an access and having someone there all the time makes it difficult for those that would like to utilize that facility. It's very small, but it's still powerful to be able to go in there and use it. So whoever came up with the concept is great, because if this works well, and nothing goes bonkers on it, we'll be okay. So I look forward to seeing how that kind of comes to life.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Ward.
Yes, I'd just like to thank Clint for his inspiration, motivation, and all the ideas you come along with. There's no small package in your eyes. You make them all big to me, and I thank you so much, and I can't wait till the new library comes. Thank you. I'm blessed.
Thank you.
It's coming.
Councilman Fawcett.
No, I'm sorry, I meant to come.
Okay. Clint, thank you very much. This is a pretty exciting little initiative, also Chukatack being near and dear to my heart and where it's located in that community, being able to once again integrate the power of technology, so we're able to keep an asset open and provide more services for a greater length of time to our citizens without any relative expanse. So keep up the good work. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we do have a motion this evening to schedule a City Council work session for Wednesday, January 17, 2024, at 4:00 p.m. Unless canceled. Councilman Fawcett. Got a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett. Councilman Williams.
Second.
Second from Councilman Williams. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We're now move to non-agenda speakers. Madam Clerk, do we have any non-agenda speakers? And if so, please explain the timing system.
We do have one individual registered for non-agenda speakers. Each participant, each person participating under the item of business entitled "non-agenda speakers" shall limit their remarks to the services, policies, and affairs of city government, and shall be permitted five minutes for the purpose of presenting his or her matter. Speakers appearing before City Council will not be permitted to participate in the following activities: to campaign for public office, promote private business ventures, engage in personal attacks, or use profanity. Speakers who violate these rules will be declared out of order by the presiding officer and will immediately yield the floor and be seated. Our sole agenda speaker this evening is Terrence Parks, 6218 Winthrop Drive, representing self regarding police operations. Is Mr. Parks present?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members. My name is Terrence Parks. I'm a resident of Burbidge Grant. On the morning of December 30, police responded to a home with a distressed family member, and shortly after, a minor child was shot during the response. Thankfully, although still tragic, the incident did not result in a fatality. Many in the community, like myself, were shocked, and speculation as to what actually transpired began almost immediately within the community. While an investigation is currently underway, several questions remain unanswered. It is understood that police potentially face all types of danger responding to disturbances, and often need to make split-second decisions to protect themselves and the public at One question is, was the firing of a gun the only method to stop their perceived threat, especially one so young? Does Suffolk have a mobile crisis unit ready to deploy with police responding to suspected mental health incidents to help in de-escalation? If not, why? If so, were they available? My thoughts and prayers are with the affected family, and it is my hope that at the conclusion of the investigation, the police offer full transparency to the family regarding the incident to include all evidence of the encounter and the thought process of the actions. It would also be an act of good faith to address the community at the next Available Owners Association meeting and reassure citizens that when called, all measures will be taken to prevent such an outcome in the future. One thing that I do not want to get lost in the events of December 30 is that a family remains scarred, and long after the physical wounds heal, there may always be a question for some if the people sworn to serve and protect will help or eventually do more harm. I urge all officials responsible to the communities to help in any way they can to prevent further tragedies like the recent one from happening again, and to actively promote mental health resources that are currently available. Please exercise the same concern and vigor that you would as if you were on the campaign trail. Now's the time that the community could really use your presence. Thank you for your time, and may peace find us all in the new year.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we now move to new business. Madam Clerk, do we have any additions to tonight's agenda?
We have one addition for tonight's agenda, a motion to nominate and appoint Gail Banks-Jackson to the Suffolk Redevelopment Housing Authority Board of Commissioners.
Counsel, a motion would be in order. Councilman Bennett.
Move for approval.
Got a motion for approval. Councilman Bennett. Councilman Johnson.
Second.
Second from Councilman Johnson. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
At this time, do we have any new business that would require the action of City Council for any consideration? Hearing none, we'll move to announcements and comments, and at this time, I'll ask if Media and Community Relations Director Jennifer Moore has any announcements.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, City Manager. I'll start the announcements off with a reminder that the City of Suffolk will observe the upcoming Martin Luther King Jr. Day on Monday, January 15, and city offices will be closed. Normal operations will resume on Tuesday, January 16, at 8:30 a.m. There is no interruption to trash and recycling collection, and Suffolk Transit will operate as normal. In exciting news on recent City of Suffolk promotions, Randy Brooks in Public Utilities has been with the city since 2014 and has recently been promoted to Water Production Manager. And Becky Luther in Human Resources has been with the city since 2012 and has recently been promoted to HR Training Manager. Congratulations to city staff members on these recent promotions. And the Parks and Rec Department is excited to announce the return of the Bon Secours Caravan. This mobile clinic will offer free medical services that provide general medical care to uninsured adults and children, and will be at the East Suffolk Rec Center the first Wednesday of every month, with the next visit being February 7. Appointments begin at 8:30 a.m., and services include routine evaluations and treatments of common acute illnesses. Appointments are mandatory and must be made in advance. To schedule an appointment, visit bonsaccours.com. Parks and Rec is excited to host the upcoming Poetry, Prose, and Pizza Event on Thursday, January 11, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. The Suffolk Art Gallery, the Suffolk Art League, and host Nathan Richardson are here for the spoken word event. Poets, writers, and musicians are welcome. Present your own original work or favorites by others. Not a writer or musician, come listen to the others and enjoy a slice of pizza, and visit the gallery to relax in a comfortable, open environment. For more information, visit sufficva.us. And join Suffolk Tourism in partnership with the Suffolk Center for Cultural Arts as they proudly present the Winter Family Movie Series at the center. Three blockbuster family movies that will enchant worldwide audiences. The series kicks off on Sunday, January 14, with the Super Mario Brothers movie. Admission is $2 per person, and the movie will begin at 2:00 p.m. And that concludes my announcements this evening. Have a great night.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Moore. Now we're going to go ahead and move on to announcements and comments by Counsel. Councilmember Butler Barlow. Let me get you turned over there. There you go.
Thank you, Mayor. Wasn't ready for that. I just really want to say Happy New Year to everybody. We started off the new year with a kind of a quiet meeting, and that's okay. But I hope everyone had a great holiday, and again, Happy New Year, and we got lots of work to do in 2024. Looking forward to it. Thanks.
Councilmember Bennett.
I don't have much to say, though. It's a new year. We starting out a new year and looking forward to great things happening in our city, and hope everyone had a safe holiday with the families and enjoyed, and good to be back, and we'll see you next time.
Councilmember Johnson.
Welcome, Stephanie Powell. I haven't spoke to you yet, to say we are happy to have you onboard as our Assistant City Attorney. To everyone who came out tonight, thank you very much. It's good to see faces. It'd be good to be a part of it. We, again, beginning of a new year, it gives us a time of reflection, opportunity, and better than anything else, promise of what's to come. It's going to be an exciting year. I am so looking forward to this year and what it has to offer. With that, I'll say Happy New Year and good night.
Councilmember Rector.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to echo, and I hope everyone had a joyous holiday season, no matter what traditions you hold close as a family. And since, hadn't a whole lot happened since the last meeting, I brought the newspaper. So if y'all don't mind, I'm going to read a couple of articles out of the newspaper. But one of them caught my attention, and I don't know how many of y'all saw this. But on the 28th of December, The Virginian Pilot ran an article by Ben Swenson that was talking about the solar farms, and mostly the ones up in James City County that are directly tied with Dominion Power. And a lot of the information is specific about those solar powers, but just, you know, every now and then, it's good to know that we're not in a boat alone, and that other locality struggle with the same issues. And so I just want to read a couple of quotes out of it. The first one is, "Solar farms attract the attention of rural property owners because agriculture is no longer a practice option for many of them." And this is one of their planning commissioners. "Children have little interest in farming the land and leasing the property for agriculture is not lucrative. Putting a solar farm on the property generates substantial income and is a way to keep the land in the family and help offset property taxes." But then they also talked about, you know, the downside of it, and he says there are a lot of nuances involved with it. And let's see. Here we are. "Planners have insisted that the planting of vegetation that creates a visual screen for adjacent landowners are demanding measures to mitigate stormwater runoff, such as specific disking and a method of turning and loosening the soil under the panels." And then, "Planners at the state and local levels are still navigating uncertain elements of creating such farms as finding the right balance between the construction of renewable energy and the preservation and production of agricultural and forested lands." And then they also went on to discuss the fact that the long-term effects of solar farms are still not known. So virtually everything that we've had discussions about here, we're not the only ones. So they're going on in other localities, too, but I think we're doing a pretty good job of trying to get it right. And then lastly, today marks a one-year anniversary of my time on council, and I continue, I was and I continue to be the only new guy on the council, and I just want to thank all of my fellow council members for making me feel like a part of the team. And Al, I would also like to thank you and the entire city staff for being as responsive to my many, many requests for information as to how to get things done. And we look forward to a good and productive 2024, and with that, I'll say good night.
Councilman Williams.
Yes, I'd like to start off by saying Happy New Year to everyone. We're looking forward to 2024, and I'm definitely looking forward to working with my fellow council members here, and I know we're going to move this city forward in a positive, productive manner. I'm going to be very short tonight. I would like to offer my condolences to the family of Mr. Alfred Turner and the Saratoga Community. Mr. Turner was the president of the Civic League and a pillar of the community and will be truly missed. And with that, I'd like to say good night.
Councilman Fawcett.
I am going to be even brief, more brief than y'all have been. Hope everybody's holidays were great. Congratulations to all the city staff that have been promoted, along with Ms. Powell as well. Welcome to our group, and Happy New Year to everybody, and look forward to this year, because it's going to be a busy year, and it's going to be even busier because we have a presidential election this year. So that ought to make it even more exciting. So with that, good night.
Vice Mayor Ward.
Yes, I would like to say Happy New Year to everyone. I think 2024 is going to be an exciting year, a lot of hard work, a lot of... I think 2024 is going to be an exciting year, a lot of hard work, a lot of decisions going to be made. I just want to thank Mr. Parks, I think that's his name, for coming, supporting your community. Burge Grant is a community that's dear to me, and I always try to make myself present there. But a few things, let you know that we listening, we understand you coming, and we appreciate your coming. And personally, I do, and it won't be the last time you hear from me. Thank you so much for coming. I think I read in the paper since when the council brought it up, it might have been a while, that I think a cheerleading squad won first place somewhere, and I like to, I don't know their name, but I like to congratulate, congratulate them too in their winning awards. Last month, one of the council's persons said something that I wouldn't mention because of, it was Christmas, and I didn't want to be, I wanted to have a happy Christmas. And what they said was something that I think I've been trying to do for the longest time. And I don't know if, I just took it a way of apologizing who you are. And it was saying that she apologized for an organization that, you know, looked for her to represent them. And I felt like, there's no need to apologize, because everybody on this council didn't wake up without a reason to run for the city, not only for them, but to make the city better than what they are. I'm looking at the council, I'm looking at everybody, everybody have an agenda. Everybody have a reason to run. It was something that made me run, well, I said myself, made me run, that I had no intentions of running. But what I want to say is, there's no sense of apologizing, because them people that put you in this office, they look for your guidance and look for your support to try to make things happen. And that's what I've always been doing. So don't apologize. If you did less than that, I wouldn't look at you as being serious. So there's no apology for that. And I'm glad you said that, because you made me decide what I'm going to do. But that's good, and that's great, so don't apologize. Keep doing what you're doing for your community, and that's why you are here, because of they believe in you. And as long as I'm on council, I might not say it the way others want to say it, but nobody worked harder than me when we got a situation that is unclear to my community or my borough. With that, I say Happy New Year, and God bless.
Okay, I'll go ahead and wrap it up, try to be almost as brief. I want to start off by congratulating Ms. Pugh and her appointment as Deputy City Attorney. The legal advice that comes out of that office is really invaluable in guiding us on a regular basis to ensure that we're doing the right thing. And you're part of an excellent team, and we look forward to working with you a little In regards to our work session today, for those of you that missed a work session, I think it's worth taking a look at. We had a presentation explaining the Hampton Roads Computer-Aided Dispatch Interoperational Project, which is a collaboration with Fire and Rescue from Suffolk, Portsmouth, Norfolk, Virginia Beach, and Chesapeake, which once again exemplifies the regional cooperation that we're fortunate enough to have with our neighboring cities, which results in better response times, more efficient service for our citizens, not only in the city of Suffolk, but in the neighboring communities as well by sharing those assets. And we also talked about the Marcus Alert System, which is directly related to how we handle mental health issues in regards to law enforcement, and basically how they're going to be handled as they come to the 911 operator. There's going to be a 988 number that can be called directly, but there will be four classifications of need in regards to mental health issues. And as this progresses, we will continue to be more efficient as to how we were able to respond with the resources we have. And I'm looking forward to the continued development of that program as we move forward. And in that light, Friday, we have a regional meeting. The city manager and myself will be having another regional meeting related to violence prevention, and a lot of what we talk about in violence prevention is also related to mental health. And I just looked at the agenda for Friday, and the topics are going to be holistic, a strategy to address issues related to the following topics: concentrated poverty, access to guns, desensitized communities and individuals, the judicial system, mental health and unaddressed trauma, family dysfunction, and poor conflict resolution. All these will be topics that will be discussed amongst all the mayors and CAOs of Hampton Roads. It's not only Southampton Roads, but also Newport News, Hampton, Pecos, and New York County, Alawak. Pretty much everybody's in TPO, I guess. So it's, usually these are very productive meetings. You just try to come away with something. Everybody gets to brainstorm as to what may be working in their locality specifically, and then on the other side of the coin, how we could work collectively through some of these initiatives. And today's work session is a perfect example of that. And with that, I too want to wish everyone a very Happy New Year, and I look forward to working with this staff, our staff, and council as we continue to serve our citizens and we strive to move our city forward. And my quote for the night, go figure, has to do with the new year, and that's from Vern McClellan, and that is, "What the new year brings to you will depend a great deal on what you bring to the new year." And with that, I will say good evening and ask for a motion for adjournment. Councilman Williams?
So moved.
Have a motion for adjournment from Councilman Williams. Councilmember Butler-Barlow?
Second.
Second in by Councilmember Butler-Barlow. Any discussion in the motion? Hearing none. Council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record to vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
This meeting stands adjourned.